I probably should make sure it's on the master.
Right.
Sorry about that.
Mayor, it's four o'clock.
There you are. I'm going to call. With a study session, go into closed door and then hold our general meeting at 7:00 PM this evening. And with that, city clerk, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Thank you. And we will move into current business, which is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Gardner.
I have nothing.
Councilwoman Petros.
I have none.
Councilwoman Selig.
I have none.
Councilwoman Daigle.
On item number fourteen, which is the Big Canyon Restoration Project, I wanted to modify slightly the recommendation that we begin the RMP planning with the approval of the contract with Irvine Ranch Conservancy and that contracts being considered this evening. And the modification would be eliminating language once funding is secured, the overall project funding. So we just begin the planning stage at this, at this stage unless anyone has an objection to that.
I noticed that on item fourteen as well, and I certainly do not have any objection to it. Does anyone else on the council have an objection of eliminating the last half of that sentence? It's item number fourteen. The recommendation paragraph, the recommendation would be approve of professional service agreement with the new Irvine Ranch Conservancy on a not to exceed price of $169,060 for the preparation of an R R M P for Big Canyon and authorize the city manager and the city clerk to execute the agreement with the new Irvine Ranch Conservancy, period, eliminating once the intended contribution funding is secured and made available from a settlement agreement between the Irvine Company and Defin the Bay Inc. Anyone have a problem with that? I don't see any heads shaking vertical, only horizontal.
Great, well, thank you. I really appreciate that, everyone.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Hen.
I have nothing.
Presentation on Homeless Awareness Month.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, I appreciate your willingness to hear from Scott Larson. Scott is with Orange County HomeAid and is the chairman, chairperson of the Orange County Commission on Homelessness. And I asked Scott, so this is at my invitation, to come and talk to you and the community a little bit about homelessness awareness month and then to touch on the ten-year plan that the commission helps implement. So, Mr. Larson, thank you.
Well, good evening or good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council and city manager David Kiff. Thank you for inviting me this afternoon. A lot of interesting things are going on in the county, some that you may be aware of and others that you maybe not, and I wanted to just take a few minutes to touch on them. I'm the executive director for HomeAid Orange County, which you may or may not be aware of, but HomeAid was established 25 years ago by the local building industry association of Orange County to basically build and renovate shelters for the homeless. And it has been quite a journey, not only here in Orange County, but our organization has grown nationally from here. And here in Orange County alone, we've been involved with over 50 developments ranging from remodels of small, single-family homes to as large as multimillion-dollar projects on the Testa Marine Base, all serving various aspects of homelessness. And it's estimated that over 50,000 individuals have been housed in projects that we've been involved with over the last 25 years. And we currently have around 10 developments that we're involved with, some dealing with homeless youth, others are dealing with homeless families as well as individuals. It was a couple of years ago that we became aware that there was a need to do more advocacy on homeless issues, and we started, from our perspective, a homeless awareness month that ties into some national work on National Homelessness Awareness Month, and a variety of local groups throughout the county have begun to get on this bandwagon and understand issues related to things in local communities as well as throughout the county as a whole. I provided for you a calendar of things that have gone on from HomeAid's perspective. It highlights not only work that we've been doing, but touches base briefly on around 20 different agencies that we've worked with, ranging from Families Forward to the Orange County Rescue Mission to Mercy House and others throughout the community. Part of it is to encourage people to get involved and to be aware of things that they can do this month, even as simple as, you know, different volunteer activities to providing care kits, to a variety of different activities in the month. So I'm glad that I had the opportunity to present this and to show this to you today. And with Mr. Kiff's involvement with the commission and homelessness, we'll be sure to be able to bring more things back your direction. HomeAid got involved with the commission and homelessness that I currently chair around four or five years ago when the plan started to be written for a ten-year plan on homelessness here in the county. At the request of the federal government, every county in the nation has to have a ten-year plan on homelessness. Well, we have a very diverse county, a county with a lot of different interests and perspectives, so to write a plan to cover 34 different cities in the county is quite an audacious task. So at the direction of Lucy Dunn and others from the business community and the social service community, we wrote this plan with the county. To implement the plan, rather than the plan just being on the shelf, we put together a commission to be held accountable for this plan. And the commission has both elected officials on it, city managers such as Mr. Kiff, along with now David Cavassos from the city of Santa Ana, as well as social service providers, other people involved in different aspects of government. It's a very diverse commission, and it has a number of different key perspectives of things that it's trying to accomplish. It's looking at things as a whole in the county on homeless issues, and it's getting down into very specific issues with cities. Some of the things that have been accomplished, this ten-year plan officially started around three years ago. We're currently in phase three of the plan. Phase one included setting up the organization, getting it all set, actually developing some infrastructure with something that's called HMIS, a homeless management information system that's tied to HUD, to actually track and understand who's falling into homelessness and who's accessing services in the county. We also had to really understand data, which really has been something that has been at the crux of homeless issues is, one, how many people are homeless in the community, not just in core areas and civic centers, but throughout the county as a whole, and what types of homeless are there? There's the chronic homeless, there's veterans that are homeless, there are homeless that are families, there are homeless that are youth. So data's been very important, and we're figuring out all the different data systems that are needing to be done. The other key things that have been important for us to understand is a lot of change in how HUD, which provides up to $17 million in funding for the county on homeless issues, how they're changing their priorities and how that directly impacts decisions that are made both by social service agencies and by cities on what gets funded related to homelessness. A couple of the things that have been really important for us to develop is actually where are the homeless shelters in the county? And when you really begin to look at it, there are concentrations of shelters, and then there's areas where there aren't any. But one of the key things that was really shown with, although with all the work that HomeAid and others have done, there truly is a lack of emergency shelter in the county. If you needed to go to someplace today or somebody in your community needed to go to somewhere exactly today to find a place to stay, where would they go? Fortunately, the cold weather shelters have opened up early, and those are available, but they're not ideal for families, which on average, there's been about 100 families a month that show up to the armory, and those programs are not year-round and not even open during the day. So one of the key initiatives of the ten-year plan, and we've been working in a number of areas, is to find permanent sites for year-round emergency shelters. And we've made some good progress, we've hit some hurdles, but we've also made some significant strides in securing funding as well as key support from elected officials, from the supervisors' levels on down to individuals with cities. The other key things that we've been doing is looking at how effective or not the existing shelter system is. You've got probably 50 to 60 various nonprofits running all kinds of variety of different programs. Our intent is to have them as efficient as possible, to get people back housed and on their feet. That's been very challenging because of each of the independent directions that these nonprofits can go. Ultimately, after we look at establishing emergency shelter, establishing an effective system, it's going to be the development of permanent housing. So in the next several years, working with key leaders that are involved with affordable housing projects and key groups such as Lucy Dunn and the Orange County Business Council, we'll venture into that arena. So that's kind of where we've been the last couple of years. HomeAid has been actively involved from a development perspective on it, the variety of agencies have been involved, from changing the system of how homelessness is addressed in the county, and we're glad that there's been a very key focus on this topic in the county. You may have questions for me at this point. I knew that I had about five to 10 minutes to briefly talk to you this afternoon, and I certainly would welcome the opportunity to come back on a specific topic if you're interested in me delving into something more, more specific.
Please, any questions?
I do, I just, I think one of the challenges is frankly our attitudes. I think there's a bit of, I think sometimes we blame people, what did you do wrong?
Correct.
To be homeless, maybe less so because of the Great Recession. I think maybe that opens some eyes, that it was, any of us could have been there. But do you have any kind of outreach that tries to work and give a better picture of the varieties of kinds of homelessness to those of us who may not be touched on, except, you know, we see a person once in a while?
Correct. You know, from HomeAid's perspective, we've been working on tools like that. Specifically, we've developed a care kit that people actually have that kind of raises their awareness of, okay, there are people on the streets, what can I do to help that person? It's beginning to make you have a higher level of awareness. As far as the types of people that are homeless, not only myself and HomeAid's work, but in the county, we're really looking at how do we educate on who is actually falling into homelessness? Being part of the homebuilding industry the last seven years, a lot of people in the industry that has been not only involved in our projects but building homes throughout the region have fallen into homelessness. And you're right, the Great Recession has raised awareness. I hope that with the better economy that people don't lose that sensitivity. But one simple number to think through or to just have in your mind, only around 20% or less of those that experience homelessness in the county are the chronic. So the question is, who are all the other people? And a lot of them are families due to a whole variety of different circumstances. It could be abandonment, it could be job loss or medical condition, or maybe some wrong choices. So we are developing those materials, and there's a gentleman on the ten-year plan, the commission, that is going to be developing some campaign and marketing materials to educate. So that's, that's part of the ten-year plan as well.
And then you also work, I think, probably with the police. I know often they're the first contact.
They are, and in fact, coming up in the early part of January is what's called, or late January is the point in time count to identify, you know, do an actual street count of who's the homeless. The police departments have been very key in identifying where those counts are and where we're going to be going. Many cities have had established liaisons to be that direct point of contact, some that came out of crises such as in the city of Fullerton, that they've really developed a much more keen sense of how they deal with not only the chronic, chronic but other. But in the city that I live in, they have a specific police officer or officers that are the liaisons, because they are literally the first people on the street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Larson, it's good to see you again. As you may know, I, for, up until recently, was the city of Newport Beach's and the county supervisory district two represented to the Housing and Community Development Committee.
Correct.
And saw that committee's work through the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies. And all that money that was slated to go to the homeless just evaporate.
Right.
So your job has become even more, more important and unfortunately more difficult. I think that it's important that we recognize that, and, and as you were suggesting, the populations of homeless in our county. One that shocked me were the number of veterans.
Correct.
Who do not have a place to, a roof over their heads. They've served our country nobly, and we have nowhere to put them.
Right.
I just, I applaud your efforts. One small, minor recommendation, get more of those packets out. They went rather quickly at LSA, my company.
Well, absolutely. I did bring some here, since you brought them up, and I will leave them, I have some of the, some of the packets available for you, so.
Mr. Larson.
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation.
Very much.
And I know that our police department here works very hard on looking for the cause on an individual basis and trying to resolve the issue at that cause level. And I know it's, it's truly a challenge.
Well, I appreciate you having a focus on that, and it is involved with every community, and you never know who's going to fall into it, and how we as a community need to have a system to be able to help those people back, back to where they need to be on their feet.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott, I appreciate that.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to make comment on this topic? No one? Thank you once again.
Thank you.
Very concise and serious presentation. We'll move on to item SS3, Arts and Cultural Master Plan.
Mayor Hill and members of the council, I'm Tim Heatherton, your library services director. Earlier this spring, the council tasked Arts OC to develop an arts master plan, which was approved for recommendation to council by the Arts Commission earlier this month. Here tonight are Rick Stein and Pat Wayne from Arts OC to present the plan to council.
Mayor Hill, members of the council, it's a privilege for us to be here today to present to you the culmination of the work that you set us to task back in May, and it's a great opportunity to share with you our findings and recommendations. We do so on the, as part of a process that really began about 12 years ago when the city's arts commission at that time worked with city staff and the council to incorporate cultural and arts elements into the city's general plan. And we have referenced those elements in our plan that we present to you today to show the continuity of thinking that exists and to share with you the consensus that really exists in the community around the importance and value of arts and culture We, our presentation is about 15 minutes long, and we have a PowerPoint for you, we'll take you through the recommendations briefly, and then we will entertain your questions and comments at that time. As we embarked on the project, we all agreed on several objectives, community input and following effective practice, the identification of community assets, which were not really all catalogued previously, and the opportunity to identify what are the challenges facing artists and arts organizations and community access to the arts in the community. And importantly, we also did some research into the economic impact of the arts here in the community. For the economic impact, there were a number of sources we referenced. One was the federal Form 990s of the largest nonprofit arts and cultural institutions here within the community, and utilizing Chapman University's A. Gary Anderson School of Management methodology that has been used for many years in the Orange County business, Impact of the Arts Report. We calculated that at least $57 million of impact economically benefits the community just from those largest nonprofit organizations here. A separate source of data was Dunn &amp; Bradstreet, which of course you know is a highly respected national business data firm, and they put together a report for the Americans for the Arts, which catalogs as recently as January, 847 arts-related businesses. Those include some nonprofits, but are mostly commercial entities employing almost 3,000 people. So looking at moving forward with a report like this and a plan like this, it's valuable to consider how important the overall arts ecology is to the city's economic well-being. Our first recommendation, therefore, was that the city should continue to grow public investment in arts and culture. There are already funding mechanisms in place here within the city. The city has committed itself to funding arts programming, arts facilities, and arts organizations within its borders, and we applaud that. We've shared with you in the report not only how you are doing it and how much you're spending on it, but also what cities around the nation, the top 60 cities, are spending seven and a half dollars on average per capita. The city of Newport Beach right now is $2.81 per capita. Neighboring Laguna Beach is spending $44 per capita. So those are benchmarks against which you can measure progress in terms of your investment and the overall arts ecology as you move forward with your future year's budgeting. And we recommended that a task force be established to review the current funding levels and recommend appropriate growth for the city's investment. Similarly, we recommended that there be an investment within the city administration in the hiring of an experienced, seasoned arts manager who can work with the arts commission, can work with the council and staff in helping to further the goals of this arts plan. Everybody knows it can't be done in a vacuum, it can't be done entirely by volunteers, although, you know, you have a wonderful arts commission, they work hard, they roll up their sleeves and do a lot of work, but somebody needs to be the glue and somebody with the knowledge and expertise to guide their efforts and to also capitalize on the many collaborative opportunities within the community that are not now being exploited. So we recommend that the job position that was first brought forward about a year ago to replace the former arts coordinator be examined again and that the city then establish a new position to manage the arts. Another way that the city can be very helpful to the arts community is by instituting friendlier policy that can help grow the organizations here that are already contributing to the quality of life and artistic health of the community, and yet often find struggles in terms of the availability of facilities, the cost of facilities, and so the city's own facilities are not always available to them, and yet it's a wonderful opportunity and actually a very inexpensive way to foster arts programming in the community by working with them and making those facilities available. So the possibility of actually budgeting for some in-kind help to contribute to the various arts organizations and their programs in the community would be of great benefit, and we recommend a number of ways in the plan that that can be accomplished.
Can I ask you a question here?
Yes.
Or maybe, maybe your perspective on a matter. This council has already acted to set aside a small amount of development fees for the arts, and I think we're seeing the fruits of that in the work that's already been done to date in our park. There are those critics, though, and some of which that may end up on this dais, who would say it's not appropriate for government to get involved in the, the funding of this, that it's, it's, should be done in the private sector, that it should be done by individuals, not government. How would you react to that? What would be your response to that? What is our responsibility?
The greatest cities in our country, in our county, in our state, all believe in investing in their arts infrastructure and arts programs, and that's part of what makes them great. It also stimulates more private sector support. It's one of the reasons, for instance, that the National Endowment for the Arts and the California Arts Council all require matches from private sources to any of their grants, because they do want to stimulate private giving to the arts and private investment. But, you know, I think what you also have is a high degree of consensus coming out of this report, that the city is on the right track and has been since the early, the early 2000s when it incorporated this into its general plan, to be investing in the arts. And I think, you know, certainly the, the bigger argument may be how much is appropriate, where are the real needs within the arts community, what are the priorities in terms of developing and continuing, continuing to grow the arts ecology here? So to me, I don't think we heard in our public forums, in our interviews, in our focus groups, you know, anyone who did not feel that it was appropriate for the city to be investing in it. And so I think it's just always a matter of, of degree and... And so I think it's just always a matter of degree and the available resources and prioritizing the recommendations that we've made. What are the first things that you would want to tackle within the resources available? And then in future years, perhaps some of the other things on the list can be addressed.
I would just question, though, we've gotten a lot of comments about this hasn't been a public process, and I wonder if we haven't skewed the people we interviewed. I mean, didn't we interview people who had something to do with the arts and that? Did we really reach outside and bring in those people who might go, you know what? I don't think we should do anything. So do you feel that we were broad enough in the interview process, for example?
We interviewed people who were representative of a whole variety of sectors in the community, from homeowners' associations to the business community, and yes, also the arts community. The online survey was, invitations were sent to 39,000 households on a multiple-time basis inviting their input. So I think that everybody who wanted to participate had the opportunity to do so. That's not to say that someone might have slipped through the cracks, but I do think that the different sectors were represented in terms of their opinions on the subject, and they all saw great value in this. And I will say one other thing, I do think that, as I indicated in terms of the funding part of it, that this is a starting point for that discussion, that this is only the latest stage in a process that began 12 years ago in the city of continuing to discuss how, what do we want to do artistically in our community, what kinds of community cultural resources do we want to support, and how fast or how slowly do we have to go in supporting them based on our resources. I don't think that anybody wants to dissuade private investment at all, and I don't think that anybody really who is even critical of all or even aspects of this report would say they're against the arts. So I mean, I think that it's something that everybody can get behind, it's a matter of degrees and weighing those different opportunities and priorities. Pat Wayne is going to continue with the next recommendations.
If you don't mind.
By the way, she did all the heavy lifting on this plan, so I got to just come in here and take the credit or the heat at the end.
Or you're shifting the blame over here, I can see it. I'm going to speak from here, if you don't mind, and recommendation four was about developing a 21st century communications plan, and there was universal agreement on this particular recommendation because it's something that we're all dealing with and trying to keep up with the changes to technology and how people receive their information. We actually just went through this process with the Irvine-Barkley Theater, and it was invaluable to get outside advice and leverage new marketing partnerships. It was also the number-one roadblock from the public that we heard on why they don't participate in more arts offerings. Many of them said they just didn't know about where to go look and how to easily find out about things. We identified when we interviewed Visit Newport that they can be a key partner in this endeavor, as well as other departments in the city that already have established communication strategies in place. And so I think that this one is about collaboration and working together to uncover the strategies that already exist and take advantage of them and organize the information in a particular Recommendation number five is really the heart of the plan, which is the programming. And what was interesting about uncovering and doing the detective work in the community is that we felt it really became illuminated that we want to look at programs holistically, that there's programs that the city can fund directly, which you're already doing, including those of the library and those of parks and senior services, but that the arts organizations which are located in the city, as well as regional partners nearby, have many offerings as well, and that to pull those all together and look at them as a complete picture of what's available to the citizens of Newport Beach really makes for quite an impactful landscape. So although there might be a desire to grow the city's programs, we feel a lot can be established by exploiting or engaging in the collaborations that are available, and many of these arts organizations have grants that they've gone out and gotten in order to engage new audiences, so that you can, by being a good partner, the city can be first in line to leverage those. I also just want to call out an idea that we heard repeatedly around signature events, and there's, you know, those can be a blessing, but they also have challenges to them and that are a concern, especially when they draw huge numbers of people. And what we ascertained is you have several key signature events already in the city. One is Newport Beach Film Festival, the other one is the Hyatt Jazz Festival, as well as opportunities to maybe add an arts component that supports the boat parade. So we feel that those should be thoroughly explored and are already in place. This is also an area where you can leverage the outside interest of an arts philanthropist, and by highlighting what's unique and innovative in the city, that's how you capture the imagination of private money. And we think you can rely on your arts organizations and regional arts partners to bubble up ideas for consideration. We heard some bold ideas in our focus groups that need to be brought forward in this program plan. So we feel like the appropriate next step there is to work with the Arts Commission and city staff on a retreat to really dig into programming details and establish priorities and put a three-year program plan in place.
One thought on that, retreat to me implies going away, isolating, and coming back with something. Clearly, we want the public's input on this.
Yes.
Might I suggest a different term, like open house, or some way that we're casting a wide net, we are not retreating into isolation, we are in fact going out to get input on this?
I couldn't agree more, and thank you for that observation, because that is our total intent, that that meeting would be open to the public, that it would, there would perhaps be a second public forum that would feed into that. So that would be the time, because people, when we reached out into the community, people wanted to get down into those details, and that was really not the intent of this first section, but we collected all of that information. So we will be pulling that forward, and it'll be another opportunity for people to engage, especially if they somehow got, didn't get the memo or didn't get the email on this first go-around. We tried our best to blanket the community, as Rick said, several times, but sometimes it just doesn't reach certain people, so we want to make sure that they get that chance.
So maybe we should call it a study session.
There you go. Recommendation six is really fairly straightforward, it's continue to refine the city's public art policy. There's already quite a bit in place, and there was a public art site suitability committee that had been instituted before this whole master plan came into being that suspended their activity, and we believe that might be the perfect committee to take that discussion back up, reconvene, and especially in light of the New Sculpture Garden and the issues or the compliments, as well as the challenges that have come up with that, that that committee take all of that into consideration to continue to refine the city's public art policy. Recommendation seven was about facilities, creative spaces, and first, we heard from many that any assets currently designated for arts purposes need to be protected and retained. They felt that there aren't a lot of them within the city boundaries, and this was especially true of Balboa Theater and the use of Newport Theater Art Center. One hot topic was the Orange County Museum of Art, which is going to remain where it is for at least four more years, according to our sources. And what also bubbled up in that conversation was that they actually own two separate parcels of land. So they're hoping to work with the developer on the larger piece, which will allow them to ensure a smooth move, but they are totally open to conversation with the appropriate team from the city on how that other parcel can be retained for whatever arts focus the city might consider a priority. And our recommendation is that this is a valuable community asset, which should be thoroughly and proactively addressed and explored. Finally, and most intriguing in this recommendation, is possible new space for the arts, and people are really aware of how close you are to Costa Mesa, it doesn't make any sense to duplicate that, but the fact that there is a facilities fund already in existence, that what kept coming up from various directions was that this need for a possible 350-seat space. Certainly, the library board feels a lot of demand in their programming for that size of space. Ideally, they would like to see it right next to the central library, but it was not in our purview to evaluate that in this report. But there might be a really happy marriage, if this were to be explored, between not only the library as the primary tenant, but several arts organizations that perform here in Newport Beach but don't really have a permanent home, the Southern California Children's Chorus, Orange County Women's Chorus, the Baroque Music Ensemble, and Hutchins Concert, just to name four, and Newport Beach Theater Film Festival as well. So I think it's worth taking a look at and doing some kind of feasibility study on first the need. Does that need, is that real, does it exist, who would be the tenants, how would they contribute? Coastline College also expressed a need for that space and said they would be very interested in something like that. So it's like, who could belly up to the bar on that one?
Don't they have quite a lot of stuff, though, in their new place? I mean, they've got dance studios they're not even using.
They are getting very active in the lecture and presenters there, that the most amount of people they can host is 60 people, and they're bursting at the seams. The other space need that was identified came from the teens in the mayor's youth council, that they really feel that there's no place for them, creative space for them in Newport Beach, they are going outside of the city to engage in creative activities. But the city already has this in their sights and may be able to address it through the West Newport Community Center. It might be interesting to form a teen advisory group that could participate with Parks and Senior Services in that process and contribute to it. So next step again is a feasibility study that addresses all the pieces in that particular recommendation. Recommendation eight is to, has to do with some of your existing assets, amazing number of city parks, as well as your beaches, other public spaces like McFadden Square, and what kind of unique, interesting programming might be tried there. We wanted to include what recreation and senior services, or parks and senior services are already offering to the community, which is quite robust, and they have their own creative plans. So we believe that working together across departments makes a lot of sense, to pull those offerings together, see how they all fit nicely together to make a whole within the city, and certainly the parks in the city is just an excellent natural venue, providing all kinds of opportunities in that area.
A question from staff, what's the response to the existing program, programming that we have in place now?
You know, generally, I think the residents and the public in general view our program very favorably. The attendance for different events has been really high, ranging from the Brant Centennial we did, about 200 folks in the friends' room, to about 2,200 people at the recent concert in the park, so actually our numbers are very healthy.
Recommendation number nine has to do with arts education, and what we found is that not a lot of the community even knew that Newport Mesa Unified School District has adopted an arts education plan, and that they formed their own arts commission and are proactively bolstering all of their arts offerings, K-12 in the public school system. We also engaged some of the private schools, and across the board, they were all very interested in strengthening their relationships with the city. It's not the responsibility of the city to deliver arts education, but it's obvious that people care deeply about youth and their needs, and we think by having the proper city liaison actively communicating with the public and private schools, that great partnerships can be shaped and put in place that would simply enhance what parks and recreation are already delivering. For instance, if the Creative Teen Center came to fruition, it would make sense to work with the schools, what are they already offering, and how can the city do something that's value-added, that would not duplicate. We did talk to them about their renovation of Newport Mesa, about their renovation of Corona Del Mar High School and Newport Harbor High School, both of, they're doing it because they are so impacted. They would be open to an occasional use by the city, but really it's for their students, and the number of seats there are exactly what they're going to need on a regular basis. Finally, on recommendation number 10, it's just to include aesthetic consideration in city process when they, when addressing the built environment. And I think we see this across the country in cities where they are considering art and design at the earliest possible stages of any building project in the city, and this came up because the way it was stated by the public was a frustration with new building projects that are, may not be particularly forward-thinking architecturally, and this was in directly the opposite of the pride they felt in the architecture of the new Civic Center, that they felt like this was a very forward-thinking design of the Civic Center as opposed to maybe some other building projects that are going on. And I think that this might be a fairly straightforward recommendation to implement where it's just working with, within the right city processes to see maybe how other cities have done it, where they bring forward art and design into the processes.
Is this supposed to be like a
Is this supposed to be like a design review process? Like some cities have design review committees or architectural review boards?
Yeah, it definitely can be. It's finding the right person or team that would be added to that -- to those review processes, that would represent the artistic design viewpoint.
I guess I would just comment on that. I mean, I've always taken a great deal of pride that the city of Newport Beach could achieve quality architecture without having a design review process. As an architect, I guess I shudder at thinking about having to do something in Laguna Beach or something of that sort. All due respect to those that live in Laguna Beach that are on staff. I would think that the concept of success begets success, of having a facility like Oasis, having a facility like the Civic Center, sends a message that it's okay to have good design, that you don't have to have Tuscan brown to fit into the city. And so I think that I would rather see success build that image instead of try to add a layer of regulation to it. I would -- I personally would be opposed to the regulation aspect of it.
You know, I would agree that I don't think having a design review board or function is the appropriate way to go. But I took this to be perhaps a little more broadly aimed than that. And, for example, we could consider a city policy that says, "We're going to encourage," and this becomes a part of the Planning Department review process, "we're going to encourage that new construction consider opportunities for public art as a part of the design of the project." You know, not a requirement, but where we're considering and promoting as a part of the planning process, you know, private investors to think through how they can incorporate public art and the advancement of art quality here in the city, as opposed to a design review process.
That was definitely part of this recommendation as well. So that's -- thank you for bringing that up. Just as a final comment from me, I, you know, I just want to point out that any plan can always be improved upon. This was, over a six-month period, covering as much ground as we could, pulling together as many things from the past, so we could get it all into one place. So we're very pleased that we were able to serve that purpose. In addition, the community asset mapping should be an active thing. Like, we hope we grabbed as many things as we could in terms of potential partners and existing assets, but we just discovered one the other day that had existed, had gone away, and has been resurrected on Balboa, the Taste of Balboa and the Sidewalk Art Project. So I'm sure there's other things that exist. And, you know, this really should just serve as a roadmap that course adjustments can be made as new partners emerge or there's new developments in the community. And we did recommend that this plan be reviewed periodically. And that concludes my portion.
One thing that I did not catch, which I thought was an excellent question, your broad net of query that you went out with. I would think that, is that in here someplace, a statement as to that?
Yes, it is. So the process included interviewing 25 stakeholders.
Page that you're on?
And where -- do you know what page that's on? Is that in the methodology?
It's page nine.
Yeah. That's right. So at the bottom of page nine is a summary of it?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Stakeholder interviews, focus groups, onsite visits, and community forum, as well as the online survey that I mentioned.
And everyone who participated in the stakeholder interviews, which were identified for us by the subcommittee of the Arts Commission, as well as city staff, and then the six focus groups is on pages 11 and 12.
Thank you. Other comments by the council members? Curry?
Thank you, and thank you for that presentation for the master plan, that you did a pretty good job on this. One of the statistics that caught me in reading this was that, on a per capita basis, we invest about a third of what the top 60 cities in America invest on a per capita basis in arts. And so when you think about what we have in terms of the art in the park and our cultural festivals, the film festival, the art shows and the concerts, it's -- we really get quite a lot of bang for the buck, given the fact that our investment is so much lower than other cities. In fact, it's less -- it's about 5% of what the city of Laguna Beach invests on a per capita basis, where arts really define the community there, as they do in Charleston and some of the great cities that people like to go and visit. So I think that tells us that we're getting good value for what we're spending, and we're spending quite a bit less than what other communities are doing. The other point I want to make is that, and I heard this at the Corona Del Mar Residents' Association, some of the neighbors to City Hall who are concerned about the concerts that we have, that have held here, have sort of used the master plan as a vehicle for dealing with that policy. And I just want to make it clear that whether you're, you know, support the concerts on the civic green or oppose the concerts on the civic green, whether we adopt the master plan or not, that's not the governing document that decides whether we have them. So if that's your concern about the master plan, it's misplaced in terms of comments or in terms of whether this should be adopted or become city policy, because that's dealt with separately and apart from this document.
Pardon me.
Just to tag on to that, though, I do think it would be valuable. I think that the concerts in the park have been so successful that we don't want to lose that. We don't want to be -- lose the ability to use the civic green. But we also do need to be sensitive, and I -- we got a letter from Mr. Warren, who was saying, you know, a private party or something, that we might want to really consider policies where that particular room, if you're a Green Building Council, you can have your evening, but if you have anything more than a cello, you know, you're out of luck. And to work with ways to better deal with the noise, or just make sure we always end at a good time. But I want to really encourage the city, that the future council, to pursue this Orange County Museum of Art property. It is, to me, a tremendous frustration that we have really no place to display paintings. A couple -- two years ago, I think, Akma had a show of local collectors, and I was just blown away. I was like, "Oh, my God, people that live in Newport Beach have this and they have that." And it was just, it was so exciting. And yet, if they wanted to do something, if, as we have with our wonderful watercolors, with the Rex Brandt watercolors and the others, if they wanted to do it, the library isn't suitable for that. And we have no place for that. And that's really a shame, not to have a place to display some paintings when we have collections like that, and when we have artists who live here. We have noted artists, contemporary artists today who live here and would have to go someplace else for their particular types of art. So I really think that if we can do something to salvage that property, that would be a real coup for the city.
Well, I -- Please, go ahead.
Well, you know, I -- it's not my intent at all to diminish the value of the work that you've done. I think this is a valuable product that you've created. But it really, when you stand back from it, it's a plan to plan. There is a lot in these recommendations that still needs to be articulated before it can become action. And the biggest missing component here that's my concern is a governance structure to drive the completion of all of these recommendations. And I don't think that that can be, "Well, we've got an arts commission." Well, we do, and that's great. But I don't think that's enough. I think there needs to be a governance mechanism here that has the weight of council members on it, who are committed to moving this forward. There needs to be a governance structure that has enough weight of authority and passion for making this happen that will drive it forward. One thing that I've learned in the last eight years here in public service is that it isn't easy, that projects and plans need champions and drivers to make them happen. And so my recommendation out of this is for staff, or perhaps our consultants, to come back with who's -- what is the governance structure that's going to drive the completion of this? Along with that, I would support the creation of a staff position here, because I think such a structure will require staff liaison and somebody at the staff level that's driving You know, tagging on to Councilmember Curry's comments, but maybe from a different perspective, I agree, we get a lot of bang for our buck. I still don't think we spend enough bucks in terms of pursuing the arts and our cultural development here in the city. And I'm hopeful that, in addition to establishing this governance structure that'll drive the results, that the city, the next council being seated here, will consider adopting some goals here for public funding of arts. That would include making a decision on this T-bid $100,000, whatever it is, contribution level. That needs to be decided. Whether that particular funding source is used for the arts or some other funding source is identified, we need the funding sources, and we need greater levels of funding sources than we have. That's not to say we should just say, "Well, we're going to go spend $1 million a year on the arts." I mean, all of this, I think we need to establish a goal that would only be fulfilled as specific projects come forward that make sense to spend the money. So it's not that I'm trying to force-feed this at all, but I do hope that the continuing council here sets some goals for funding, puts in place a structure to drive the process, as well as having the staff support.
Rick, are you aware of any cities that have such a structure where there's, like, an arts commission and that council members also participate in some formal way?
No, I'm not, other than, I think, with respect to sometimes special projects, the assignment of a staff, a task force of council members.
Is it the Arts Commission that you're not aware of, or is it the staff that you're not aware of?
No, no, in terms of the --
If council members formally participate in?
Yeah, in terms of the council's participation in a --